All right, okay. The Bussara City Council Joint Regular Committees Meeting for Thursday, May 3rd, 2018. I guess we'll call that to order. Members, the entire city council, Mark McKeever, Kevin Myers, Dan Wireball, Bruce Truca, Monica Satt, the Fote, and Andrew Schock, they are all present. So we will begin this meeting at 6:00 PM. And is there any public participation? First question? Okay, not at this point. You get another chance, though. So, order of committee business. First on the, is, I guess I'll call Public Lands and Buildings Committee to order at 6:01. And order of business, first up is the water towers maintenance. So I think we might get a presentation on this or something here.
Okay, I'll introduce him.
Okay, hit it, Terry.
Okay. We have with us tonight Darryl Bowling from Suez Water Utility Services, now Suez. But he was here maybe a year ago, but we got quite a few new people on councils, so we decided to bring him back, give you guys an idea of what the maintenance program is on the water tower. So, you're on, Darryl.
Thank you, thank you. Again, my name is Darryl Bowling from a company called Suez, and we work with water utilities around the United States and actually around the world for that matter as well. So you can see, Suez is present in about 70 countries. We have about 112,000 employees, about $19 billion in revenue last year, and we work about 323 municipalities, okay? So, the purpose of that slide is to say, work for real, you know? With that being said, a lot of the different areas that we work under are water wells, water quality, steel and concrete tanks. And tonight, you'll see down there in the green, we manage and service contracts about 8,000 tanks, and that's what we're talking about tonight. And then we do a lot of pipelineing, filter plant rehabs, and a lot of the projects as well. And when we say, when we say that we're in a service contract with 8,000 tanks, we'll talk through that, but what we do is we come in and inspect your tank, find out what the current condition of your tank is versus what like an A+ condition would be, and that's viewed from the American Water Works Association, viewed from EPA, viewed from OSHA, viewed from the 10 state standards. So we view it, inspect it, create that gap analysis of where it needs to be to get it back to perfect condition, and then put together a scope of work to maintain the tank and to get it back to that level. And there's a maintenance component, too, that allows you to pay a fee and the tank will stay at that level. We're 100% responsible for all the work, so if you have failures on us, we'll do change orders, that kind of a process, and we'll talk about that more in a second. So, back about 2012, 2013, the Ohioirvice Code adopted a tank asset model, if you will, saying that it's a professional service because of the model on the left, you can see you have a tank owner, you have a tank painter, you have an engineer, you have inspection contractors, all kinds of different people involved. And on the right, you have kind of one company, if you will, taking care of all of those things. What happens is, the model on the left, you get all this back and forth, who's fault, who's responsible, that kind of thing. At the end of the day, you know, it usually falls back to you, the city. What happens with that is you typically get a lot of change orders out of that process, you get performance, workmanship, quality issues out of that process. So that's when the Ohioirvice Code adopted this tank asset management program, and says, hey, this is a professional service. Because as I had one person tell me once, that means that they have one throat to choke, was the way it was phrased to me. And there's a lot of truth to that. With that, so the Ohioirvice Code is 9.29, and says this is a professional service, and this is what we have, over 8,000 tanks we manage under today. So what have we done so far? We've inspected both of your tanks by NACE level inspectors. NACE means the National Association of Trojan Engineers. We look at the coatings and things of the tanks, and again, looking at them under a lot of different views. They're inspected for compliance from AWWA, which is the American Water Works Association, the Ohio EPA, OSHA, 10 state standards, Homeland Security, all those regulations that can be viewed to a public water system is what we're looking at the tank to inspect it by. We look at areas of the coatings, we look at sanitary conditions, the security of the tank, structural issues, and then safety issues as well. We also grab paint samples from the tank because we need to know what the current coating systems are in there. You can't, you can't, for example, along, you can't put an oil-based paint over a water-based paint or vice versa because of the point here, and it'll eventually fall off. So we have to know what we're dealing with, so we sent that to a lab and looked at it. We've also sent it to another lab to understand if there's any chromium or lead involved because if we were to be working on it, sanding on it or anything, from EPA regulation standpoint, you can't expose anybody to chromium or lead without special techniques being used. So we need to understand that as well. One of the big, expensive parts of a tank program or tank maintenance painting is understanding where you are on this curve. If exterior coatings tend to last 13, 14 years before you can paint over them again. So we're trying to find out where your tanks live on that curve. If you go too far, the coatings will start to basically break down, and you start getting flaky and happy and all those kind of things, and then you can't paint over it any longer. You actually have to put a big curtain over it. Have you ever seen driving down the road, a big bond and over a tank, and they're blasting it all the way down? And so add another $150,000 to $200,000 to a project. So nobody wants to go to the run to fail here because it's so expensive. So our goal is to make sure we catch it before we get into that full blast, as you can see down the line on the bottom right. We have an inspection process we go through, that covers about 200 different points on the tank. Again, we've done that so far. This is the lead and chromium results from your east tower, and I have a kind of circle there of the chromium and lead, and basically those numbers are all good, there's no issues there, right? Those numbers would have to be closer to the 3,000 range before there'd be any concern, and you can tell as low as yours are, that's your fault. This is an exterior, or this is a paint samples that we've had analyzed, and you know, I got the fluoropolymer in there because that's the current coating that's on the exterior of like the east tower, and that's what we need to know, so we need to make sure when we're going to paint over what's there, it's compatible, and you get a good bond, and you get that adhesion cohesion you want. Otherwise, it'll separate and fall off three, four, five years down the road. This is a tank that's in southern Ohio, and it just paid, I don't remember the number, $600,000, $800,000, I had this tank painted. And a few years ago, they gave me a call and said, hey, can you come look at our tank? It's starting to look like a, sort of a pumpkin, it looks like a dead gourd almost, right? So, we got on site, and you can start to see some areas on the side that look a little strange. On the roof, you can see where we have the lamination happening, and it was basically one of those incompatible coating systems that was applied. They circled back to the engineer, to the coating guy, and everybody else, and said, yeah, sorry, we suspect it wrong, or inspect out the wrong coatings, you're in year three, you have a one-year warranty, you know, good luck, kind of a thing. So here we are, now, they're paying for it a second time. We are now putting all the outrigger arms on there, we're blasting it all off, and have to put the curtain on it, and then there it is today. So now, the tank, the end of the program, we're 100% responsible for the coating and conditions of that tank at this point. So they will never have to go through that process again. If that were to fail at our watch, because hey, we're human, we're not perfect either, but we go back and fix it at our expense, not yours. So that's what we're telling you, if something were to happen to that, we're responsible, not you. So let's look at the east tower real quick. We're looking at the exterior coatings, which is what you can see from this picture. The dry interior is basically the inside, if you will, where it never comes in contact with water. That's what we call the dry interior. And then you have a wet interior, which is up where the word busiris is, the water is actually behind that wall, and the wet interior is actually, the coatings are coming in contact with the water. So those are like the three primary items that we're looking at, along with all of those other safety issues and structural issues. Here we are, inside, starting to climb up. You can see we have a lot of rust forming on the inside on this condensation plate that's in here. So, you know, we're starting to see some run to failure, and some severe conditions, if you will. Another view out from a different angle. Same thing, different angle. Here is a catwalk that, after you climb up about 110 feet on this tank, up a side, you climb up, and you go across a catwalk. This is the bottom of the catwalk, and you can see we're getting rust, all the spots is rust already starting to form on the bottom of that catwalk. Here's the other side, as you walk onto the catwalk, and you can start to see all the rust and corrosion and everything that's starting to form on the top of the catwalk. All that needs to be brush blasted, cleaned off, recoded and painted, otherwise it'll just continue to rust. And then if that's the case, you don't want to be the first guy to walk across that at that point, you know? You want to let your buddy go first, because that's when it can obviously become dangerous at that point. More corrosion on the inside, you can see it's starting to separate, need to be cleaned off, recoded. Areas in here need to be panned, tool-sanded, and recoded as well. Now we're on the exterior of the tank, which is in good shape. All in all, it's in good shape. This little X with this tape on there is what we call an ESTM. It's a 359 adhesion standardized test. It looks like masking tape at the bottom, and what happens is, you do a cross-up cut, you can also do a hash cut, whichever methods, you apply this tape over it, let it sit for like 90 seconds, and you pull it off. When you pull it off, you don't want any coatings or anything to stick to the tape. You want it to stay attached to the tank like this one has. This one looks good. If you have coatings coming off, then you're starting to lose that adhesion of the coatings already there, so if you were to paint over that, it'll start to create separation and pull off those existing coatings. So this one was what we refer to as a success. Now this is, we're on the roof of the tank, looking down now to the wet area. This is a, we call it the water chamber, where the drinking water is, and the opening's good, it's correct. Here's the sidewall, you can see the water line with the water there at different levels. It's hard to see, there's some staining going on, but there's some corrosion going on as well in these other pictures. This is probably your best picture to see, the coatings are on. So we have, you know, open steel at this point, so if this, and this is again, your drinking water we're looking at, so you don't want any, the coatings are there, they're called NSF approved coatings, to keep the drinking water obviously safe and good, and you want to protect the steel. So in this case, you actually have coatings that are missing in different spots of the interior. This is another spot on the interior, you can see the corrosion, or corrosion. So you've in essence gotten useful life out of the interior of this tank. It's ready, if you will, to be fixed. And how you fix that, the only spec that AWWA has, and that's the specs we have to go by, that Chad and everybody else in the water industry lives by, is the AWWA specs, that you have to blast that out to a fair, almost a near-white steel finish, and then repaint it. So you're pretty much there. So overview, the highlights of it is that wet interior, basically needs to be blasted and redone, we're saying in year two. The dry interior, which is on that other area you saw, needs to be, you know, cleaned up again by year, in year two. There's other repairs we'd want to do that are kind of minor. And then the exterior would be painted over roughly year six, because we believe that's about how long, do you remember that curve we saw at the beginning? We believe you've got somewhere five, six years left that we can still overcoat it and not have a run to failure, okay? And that's what these NACE inspectors are trained to do, is figure that out. Right now, we're saying year six. Well, there's not a perfect science for how long that'll last. If we're, if we're on that tank in year four, and it looks like we're getting closer to that run to failure, and we missed it, then the only thing we do is come back and paint the tank over. We don't change fees or anything else, fee structure stays the same, but we might move the work out sooner if we need to, because we don't want to join the failure, because now we're the ones having to pay, we put the curtain over and blasted, not you, so we would, we could alter that pulling forward. We won't push it back, we're the only pulling forward if we were to do that. North tank, any questions on east tower before we move on? Okay, the north tower.
Bruce, did you have a question?
I just got a question. I know we didn't really say anything about dollars, but is there a reason that the visual is heavily loaded at the very beginning and not still on the trailing here?
Do you mind holding that question until we get to the answer? You okay?
Yeah, but, okay, it was just, we were talking maintenance, I was wondering.
Okay. I want to walk through that sheet. Okay, thank you. On the north tank then, you know, here's that tank, same kind of a thing, looking at it. This interior's in what we consider fair condition, and, but the workmanship and stuff's not quite as good as it was on the east tower, for sure on the exterior. And if you ever went by and looked at it, here's kind of an example of what a coating system would look like, from a primer coat to a mid-coat to a top coat. Top coat's kind of shiny looking, if you ever notice, your north tower, it's looking very dull. That's because it's been kind of baked out by the UV, if you will, and coatings are starting to fail, so it's definitely not as quite as in good shape as what the east tower would be. Here's the inside, again, you can see some, this is that dry interior we looked at from the other tank. Looks like somebody tried to paint something here and clean something up at one point in time. Here we are, the same thing at the bottom of that catwalk on this tank that needs it as well. And then this one, that other arrow on the left is pointing to the bottom of the bowl, it's the weld seam on the bottom of the bowl where the water sits. The other tower didn't have it nearly as bad, this one's certainly got a lot of corrosion on all those weld seams that started to form on this tank. Again, there's the bottom of that, close up, there are the rust spots, rust spots on bottom of the bowl. Again, you see those spots where it's just separating. Now we're on the exterior of this tank. Hard to see in this picture, but what I was just describing, it's starting to get thin up there, if you will, so we're starting to lose more of this top coat. And again, it's hard to see some of the pictures, but you can see where it's thicker and thinner on there. We actually have gauges, we can actually read that as well, dry film thickness gauges we use to look at that. We have some coatings missing on the roof. Again, in other pictures, it's kind of hard to see about how thin it's getting in some areas, which is kind of typical over time for that to happen. Here's the interior of this, that's looking down into that wet chamber as well, so you can see this tank has a lot of similar issues to the other interior, starting to lose a lot of the coatings on the inside. Doesn't look as bad as around the sidewalls. You can see again, more corrosion on the sidewalls here, more on that, into that pipe moving up the center column, this pipe. And then this is that same test on this tank as we showed on the other one. This one you can start to see, it's kind of hard to see, but when we do the same test, some of these top coatings are coming off onto that tape, you can see in the center of that X, starting to pull away as well. So the adhesion on this tank is not nearly as good as it is on the east tower. So this one, we want to keep an eye on, because this one, if you're not careful, you can get to that point where you can't overcoat it, because that window can catch up to you quicker, so we just have to continue to look at it. Here's a side-to-side comparison between the north and the east, so you can see how the right one looks a lot better than the one on the left. And then the overview on this tank is similar work, but different schedules. So we're saying, let's take care of the interior of this one first, because that's where we have exposed water coming in contact with the steel on the inside, we have some other issues there, so we'd like to get this one taken care of first. And then we're saying, hey, the exterior on this one's probably year five or sooner if we see some of these issues with the coatings starting to fail soon, because you don't get on a run to failure though. So again, we, you'd be using that model on the right. There's another, there's another layer to this now. The Ohio EPA has this asset management program that goes into effect October 1st, and basically what it says, this is off of the Ohio EPA website, components of this asset management program, and this is probably stuff that Terry and Chad, Jeff, and these guys are turning to work on, if they haven't already gotten some of this done, is it's saying you got to inventory all your major assets, you need a condition assessment of those assets done, a rehabilitation plan for those assets, you know, a capital plan for the rehabilitation, and then long-term funding strategy to maintain those assets. And that's everything that we do. This is coming from, this is going into effect from the Ohio EPA in October, but this is stuff we've been doing for years. So it's kind of like they're adapting, they launched this in 2012-ish, which made it a professional service, now they're taking it almost one step further and saying, hey, you need to have a plan for all these assets that everyone has. This is from an EPA website, or a presentation they've done, talking about preventative maintenance again. It's cheaper to do it, obviously, and they've actually shown a picture of a crude rubber that can take there in their, on their slide. And here it specifically talks about, third item down, talks about interior, exterior coatings on storage tanks, and a very specific item that they're mentioning when they're going around doing their, their training along the way. This slide, kind of hard to see, but the big curve going down to the right is the run to failure curve, and they're basically saying, hey, you never want to run to failure all the way down, you're better off if you do like the green line at the top. You know exterior coatings last 13, 14 years, you know interior coatings last 15 years and everything. Create that schedule, it's like changing oil in your car, you know it's only going to go so many miles, so have a, have a plan for it. And that's what they're basically saying, same here as well. Questions, and we'll jump into your questions, sir, on the other questions. Any questions on anything else yet?
I got one question.
Yes, sir.
We're going to have a third water tower now, in North Robinson, Ohio.
Okay.
So, what's the schedule of that?
So usually when you build a new tank, this will be brand-new construction?
No, it's already there.
It's already there, where it's going to be controlled.
We don't know yet.
We don't, we don't know if McKeever's had a schedule done for that or not, he's never told us, so we've got to contact him to find that out.
We didn't include it with him because we didn't know for sure where we were going with that.
Yeah.
Because we haven't got it back from the county commissioners yet either, is that correct, Bruce?
Yes.
Yeah, so it's a potential that we could have a third one, right Bruce, but we haven't heard back from the county commissioner yet, so we didn't, we didn't have it included. So, until we know.
A similar process though would be done, you do the condition assessment, figure what the tank is versus where it needs to be, create the scope of work for it, and go through that same initial process. So let's go back to the sheet, I think you all have a copy of. So basically what happens, if you look at the north tower, it shows $76,000 over five years, so that's the price of the whole project, okay? Or the Ohioirvice Code says you have to spread the cost out for a minimum of three years. Suez has taken it to the next level, says most people prefer five years, okay? So we're now spreading over five years. So what you, what the hard part is, is you cannot look at the amount of money for that particular year. The only thing this is, is the total, total project cost in all of it, spread over five years, okay? So in year two, for example, of the north tower, it says visual in there. A visualist means that you're going to leave the tank full of water, keep it in service, we're going to come back and inspect it again. If we see something there that we don't like, we'll create a task order on our side to make sure it's fixed. And basically at that point, we'll just be letting someone like Chad or Terry know, hey, we're going to be back to fix this. Nothing changes in your program, and the costs change, this is for us to do. Year three, it says a washout or ROV, and the ROV is the little remote operating vehicle or a little submarine, it's got a camera on it. We tend to like to wash out the tank, drain it, clean it, get inside it, check out the coatings on the inside. AWWA has a spec that says a tank is supposed to be cleaned, washed and cleaned, you know, once every five years, kind of their recommendation. So we want to stick to that recommendation. So we would drain it, clean it in year three, then it'll allow it again, that's all part of it. If we see something in there starting to corrode, looks funny, we fix it at that point. So it never deteriorates or degrades over time, because we're constantly maintaining it as we go. Year five then is where it's starting to overcoat the exterior, right? So just like it doesn't cost $76,000 for that visual in year two, it costs a whole lot more than $76,000 in year five for that exterior, but the whole point is we're taking that whole lump sum and spreading it out over five years. Year six then, what's going to happen then is every 10 years or so, the exterior gets repainted, and about every 13, 14 years, the interior gets redone. So you could look at and say, okay, in year five, we're doing the exterior, well, we're going to do the exterior again when it needs it. You'll never see those high numbers again over the first five years, but now we've gotten into A+ condition. And the only thing you have in the future then is paying that maintenance fee along the way, and we take care of it, we're paying it every 10 years from there. On the exteriors, interiors are done every 13, 14 years. If there's any regulation changes that need to be done on the tank, we're in charge of those. We're inspecting it every year, giving you a report, so if you have a sanitary survey from EPA, you can have a report, say, here's what we've done to the tank, here's what it needs. So you're basically keeping it at A+ condition at that point. We do all the engineering, we do all the permitting, we do the whole thing at that point, and that's what creates that, that one throat to choke concept, because you don't have anybody else to point at except for us. And so we maintain it along the way. Did that answer your question, sir, about the cost?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it, thank you. Yes, sir.
Is this price you have here set in stone for the 10 years?
Yes. It's called budgetary, because I would need to get one last approval from our side, but it's not going to change, but...
So if, if it doesn't change, if you don't get anything adjusted on your side, this total budget for all this would be set in stone for 10 years?
Yes, sir, correct. Okay. And you can, you can cancel anytime if you choose to cancel. The contract says we cannot, but we're locked in. But you could choose to cancel if you wanted to.
Yeah, so it's not a, we're not stuck with you for 10 years if we're not satisfied?
Yes, sir, correct. Okay, yes, sir.
Should the EPA come out with additional regulations during that time, do you just simply eat that cost if it creates more work for you?
Yeah, so a good example of that, not on your tanks, but a good example of that was on the leg tanks, that's got a balcony around it, and there's a handrail there. The old spec was that handrail was 36 inches, and then at one time, they went, switched it to say any kind of handrail would have to be 42 inches, right? So all those leg tanks was in our program, we went back out the next time we were on site, and raised all the handrails to 42 inches. So that's an example of, of one of those items. Turn it around. Other, yes, sir.
What's the life expectancy of the two tanks on this program? How long do you think these tanks give us if we sign on to this?
It's considered indefinite, because it's steel. So if you maintain the integrity of the steel, keep the tank in and coated, it's an indefinite kind of a thing, right? We have tanks, we maintain, that were built in 1894, I think is the oldest one we have on record, that we maintain today, the tank from 1894. And it's still holding water well, and it's still creating pressure like it was designed for, it's still doing everything it's supposed to be doing.
Terry, what year are our towers? Do you have an idea what year?
1994, 94.
For both of them?
Close, they were close, approximating down exactly which month, 94, and as far as I know...
They were in subsequent years, one and then the other?
Yeah. They were within, they were within like a year each. And as far as I know, nothing's been done to the inside of them. And they were both done with them, and I think, one was done in 11, I think the north one, I want to say it was done in 2011, next year.
Yes.
East one was done in 2012, I believe, early. So they were done within a six or eight month period, but you can see the difference in the paint coatings, obviously.
Right.
So as far as I know, nothing's ever been done to the interior, so you've got more than 20, 20 something years.
Didn't you, the last time you were here, say that there were different coatings on...
There are, yeah. So I showed that one, I showed that polychloro coating off, but I didn't show you how, but it is a different coating. So yeah, so the north tower actually has a different coating a lot than the one the east tower has, which is okay for us, because we know what they are, and we just have to handle them differently by knowing that.
And if I do remember correctly, when the north one was done the last time, there was a whole issue, what he was discussing about the paint and the, it wasn't spectating, it was an argument that it was the paint, it wasn't, it was the spec, it was the, and then basically, it got left and no one ever got fixed on per se, so.
Yes, sir.
Your exterior overcoats, is it just simply one color, or are we continuing as it is now with the wording, or?
It is priced as it is today. Yes, and actually, when we do an overcoat, it's two, it's two coats of paint as an overcoat. There's an epoxy that goes on first, and then there's this polyurethane that we go on second. An overcoat is usually two coats of paint.
And this only covers what you've talked about here, do we have pumps and things that are associated with those towers, or nothing like that?
Everything else is at the plant.
Everything else is at the plant.
There's some biology in there, but some of that stuff is replaced, like the last time they did the exterior, so that stuff's not real old either, so that's all down. That doesn't cover any of that, it's...
It does not, correct.
It's just an altitude valve, open and closed, basically.
Other questions, any questions?
It's a big job, that's for sure, and the, I know Terry's been up talking about this management thing that you're having to put together for, for all of our major assets. Now, this is something that not only is the EPA requiring, but it's... This is something that not only is the EPA requiring, but, uh, it's something that really just makes sense that you, that you have this all down on paper, how you're going to maintain it and how we're going to, uh, uh, take care of it to make sure that we get the lifespan, lifespan out of it that we should.
Yeah.
So, um.
You've got to do it, there's no other way around it. We have, got to have it done by October first, so.
October first of this year for that north tower?
For, no.
No, I don't think that's.
That's, that's, that's you're done by.
Twenty nineteen.
Okay, nineteen is the plan.
Somebody from the administration or Joyce. Where's the money coming from? Is this going to come out of the water?
You're falling.
Water? Does this come out of the water billing? Or is this going to have to come out of the general budget?
This will come out of the waterworks fund.
That's what I'm.
But it'll be in the waterworks fund budget each year.
But that comes from the income from the water? I, I just try to clarify that it's not coming out of the tax income.
The general fund.
No, it's not going up, Joe.
That, that's what I wanted to ask.
Thank you.
Yep.
As the, the amounts go down for the, just doing the regularly scheduled maintenance, will those amounts ever come down lower than what they are currently, like in year twenty twenty-seven? Will they ever get lower than that because we're keeping up on the maintenance every year or?
No, good question. What you're seeing there are basically inflationary kind of numbers, because prevailing wages go up and everything else goes with that. So you're, you're going to tend to see that three percent increase, if you will, because based on this, I know they would not do that. By saying that, I guess I couldn't predict everything. My intentions shouldn't have been how to say that.
Any other questions?
Thank you, did a great job with his presentation, just like my.
Thank you, appreciate it. Thanks for your time, appreciate it.
Any other discussion on, I mean, the only thing I would, I mean, and I'm just, I'm getting real crazy here with this, but, uh, you know, if it basically, I mean, I don't know what the cost of paint and water tower, but if it costs, I know this, I know costs more than this, but if it costs twenty-five thousand dollars to paint a water tower, and no offense to you, sir, but, and then, and then this is what they're doing, you know, we kind of, I, I'm kind of a comparative shopper, you know, myself.
Well, we, we have reached out and got a couple other.
What did we pay to get the painted last night?
Oh, boy.
Twelve, you know, I'd like to see those, you don't have to tell me now.
We'll, we'll get some stuff put together for the next week. We're doing still a little, a little more research, so we, but we wanted to get you an idea of, uh, from a maintenance program from this company and understanding that it is becoming part of our asset management plan that is mandated by the EPA. So, um, it, it's coming and we can't stop it and, but, um, as we do more research, we'll put some stuff together for the next week.
Right, Joyce, Joyce had.
As, as if I'm recalling correctly, the last time we had one of these changes, it was roughly a hundred and seventy-five, a hundred and eighty thousand dollars to do that.
That's just the outside.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, it's just, I think we owe it to.
And that was only the exterior, right? That was just the exterior. Mr. Chairman, that was the exterior, not interior. So you got to look at both, you got to do both ways, right?
Bruce, do you, do you get more discount for more water towers?
I'd like to get one free.
Yeah, um, well, that's a great, that's a great question, but actually it takes that at fifteen, twenty tanks. We have some places that has, we got a utility in Texas that has a hundred and fourteen tanks.
Well, we won't have that.
And if I can add to that, straight question on the price, if I can add to that as well. The, the other parts that we, comes into consideration, which I appreciate your wanting to get that, I, I agree with that. You know, the comments I want to make to that is, is we don't do change orders, okay? So a lot of times, well, somebody hears what I say, it's, hey, I saw a, a low bid price, but then when I got done paying all the change orders, it was more expensive than what you guys had quoted, right?
Right.
So when you're looking at that, keep those things in mind, because we see that happen all the time. In part two is we have over eight thousand tanks in there, so if we're not competitively priced, we're not going to have business. Um, so the, the business keeps, you know, growing and growing and growing from that perspective. And we're doing, and we're providing all the services. The scope of work we're providing is trying to know if it'll be different when we find a little bit, because they're going to be on the hook for nine months to a year. And we're on the hook for the duration.
Yeah.
So you better believe we're going to do it right. Um, where sometimes we see other work done, it's, it's, you can tell us a low bid, you get in, get out, it'd be done. And then you go from there. So it tends, it tends to be that our scope of work, materials we use and the things we do tends to be different than you would see from another thing, just because we're, we're all in town.
Makes sense?
Yeah?
I just have a question, um, being that, uh, you're asking for quotes from other companies. Um, what's the timetable of, of us knowing what's going on with that third tower? Because, I mean, you know, why spin our wheels if we all know what's going on with the third tower? I mean, I'd like to have a quote on that as well, so we, we have a cost that we know upfront, so we know how to budget our money.
I'll get with Lynn McKeever and see what, uh, they've done with that tower so far. I don't recall him ever telling us where he was at with the maintenance quarter on that.
Joe, I think Lynn is getting ready, he's either just done that or he's getting ready to do it, I think. Because he has money, they have money, the county set aside to do that with. So I think they're getting ready to do, at least paint the outside, I don't know about the inside. So we can talk, we need to talk to him about, is that something? And you got to realize when you compare prices, you got to compare apples to apples, not apples to oranges. Another company will come in and say something, it might not be compared to what, what somebody else is, is presenting to you. That's what you got to watch out for.
We'll ask if they'll warranty it for five, okay?
Yeah. Okay, thank you very much.
Great, thanks for your time, we appreciate it.
So I guess we'll, we'll, we'll leave that for further discussion, so, uh, we'll move on to, uh, the banned trees ordinance, uh, where did I see that? Oh, here it is. You want me to read the part we want to change or what?
Yeah, what, so everybody can hear nine oh nine oh nine, yeah.
I mean, I, I would really enjoy reading the whole thing, but.
But what's the?
Nine oh nine point nine, this, this is the part, uh, I, I think, uh, the mayor was talking about changing, so, uh, nine oh nine point nine, certain trees are prohibited in this, uh, when was this originally?
Nineteen sixty-four.
Nineteen sixty-four, so this is from nineteen sixty-four. Uh, no silver maple, poplar, box elder, basswood, willow, honey locusts. Cat, tila.
Cataba.
Cataba. Oh, is that, I thought it was like the island. Anyhow, cataba or sycamore shall henceforth be permitted to be planted upon any tree lawn in the city. Any silver maple, honey locust, sycamore, cataba, poplar, basswood, box elder or willow upon private property in the city in such close proximity to any public place in the city as will permit the roots of the tree to penetrate through or under the surface of any public place in the city is declared to be a public nuisance and shall be invaded by the service safety director. Ordinance two seven seven eight pass six sixteen sixty-four. And there's a hundred dollar penalty in that act, so. So what's the trees do, maybe we should talk to a member of the tree board here.
Stay on my, my, I'm on the tree commission. And yes, some of those trees, well, since that ordinance is so old, a lot of the genetics have changed over the years and a lot of the ways that the city deals with leaf, uh, trash removal and, uh, branches and things like that. And obviously the modern mechanization, uh, our leaf pick up and everything, we're not out, you know, just raking leaves out and go to my hands. So one of the trees, uh, there have been trees added to the list of trees that we're not able to plant in, uh, towns anymore. Among those are these beautiful pear trees that you see all over the place. Unfortunately, the pear trees that we see now are what they call cultivars of an original tree, which is the Bradford pear. And I don't know if you are familiar with the Bradford pear, if you had them in your yard and you had a windstorm, they open up like a flower, the branches fall off. Well, because of that, nursery people decided, arbers decided that they needed a cultivar, which is a genetic variation of the original. And we ended up with our Cleveland pears and many of the pears, calendar pears that you see today. Originally, those pears were, uh, sterile, they had no fruit. Well, over, over the years, the cultivars took up on a lot of life of their own. They now produce fruit and birds are scattering those everywhere. They're taking over meadows and prairies and waterways and, and if you go down to Columbus, every overpass is lined with these beautiful white pear trees right now. Gorgeous, but they're now considered an invasive species. So the pear tree is now on the list that we cannot plant in the city. However, there are trees on that list from nineteen sixty, uh, like the American sycamore, that we would really like to introduce to our city's canopy. They're a beautiful canopy tree, uh, and with our modern, uh, methods of, of picking up leaves in, in the fall, uh, they should be added back to the list. Also, there is a, uh, what's the? Honey, honey locusts, I'm sorry. Yeah, Skyline honey locusts, which is a beautiful street tree. Uh, they used to have thorns, and that's why they're on that, that list that you don't want in your city. Uh, now they've been bred, so those thorns are gone, so they would add a beautiful, beautiful canopy to our city. So there are various trees that we like to add, and I think those are on your list. Uh, we'd just like to update that particular ordinance, uh, to get rid of ones we don't want anymore and add some new ones that would be allowed. So that's basically what we're, what we're asking. So, and I think the main thing to remember is that trees in an urban area do not propagate. Once they're gone, they are gone. And unless we replace them, our city will not have any trees. They'll lose all of the economic advantages that we have, uh, sixty-five dollars a year in energy savings. They shade streets so you don't have to repave as often. Um, it, studies have shown that crime is reduced because of they, they create, uh, areas where people can positively socially interact. And if you think about New England in the fall and the tourism in the New England in the fall, they're going to New England for one reason and one reason only, and that's the sea of beauty that they have for age. So that's basically what we're trying to do is bring some of that, that beauty, because besides, these trees are old. A lot of them are old and they have to be replaced, or else we're just going to have a city void of the trees. So that's basically what a tree commission wants to do, and that's one of the reasons why we have this list in front of you, uh, just so we can update that and allow us to proceed with our plan, uh, we want to close some of these trees. And also there are, we want to get, uh, a scheduled, uh, maintenance program for the trees we do have. There are some dangerous trees, there are some dead trees, especially in some of our parks that have got to come down just for liability to the city. I mean, they're there and they're marked and they need to come down. And if you see a picture of two adjoining, uh, towns, one has a tree maintenance program and a storm goes through the same town that does not have a tree maintenance program, the piles are brushed, and the ones with no tree ma- maintenance program, just huge. And, and the ones with a tree maintenance program, when their limbs are trued and the young trees are trained, it's just an amazing difference in cost savings. And, and storm water control, oh my gosh, a mature oak tree can absorb eleven gallons of water a day on average. And all of that water is not going through our sewer power, we're always going to treat it. So the economic importance of trees in the city is just, it, it, people take it for granted and it really must be recognized. So basically, I mean, you go on, and that's what the, what the list, list is about, and what we want to introduce to the ciders and the ones that we shouldn't introduce to the ciders, we just want to amend that.
Oh, we don't, we have.
We don't have a new list.
Oh, you don't have.
Oh, the mayor didn't provide.
No, all they have is, uh.
So, so basically what you're looking at is, uh, adding the pear trees to the banned list.
Right.
And, um, modifying the list to allow for the thornless, uh, varieties of honey locusts. And then, as far as the sycamores go, we may or may not, but, uh, the sycamores, they, they lose leaves twice a year, so that's kind of the issue with those sycamores. Uh, we were going to plant sycamores out here on Sandusky until we looked into the problems that, uh, sycamores do have. So that's why we went with the London plains instead.
Yeah, I thought, yeah, I thought that was on your list of, if you were sycamore, I'm like, I thought that was on the banned list.
Well, it's, it's, it's a fluid situation, genetics change, uh, methods of handling, so it's, it's an ongoing fluid situation, so.
Yes.
A, a question about, uh, in a lot of our older areas, we still have telephone poles out there with wires running through everything. And I, in front of my house, I do. And yes, I have two Cleveland pears that are off fire. But, uh, where are we going to be, I, I mean, the AEP comes through.
Right.
And, and if they have a line out there, they just start hacking into trees.
And that's why, that's why our tree commission is so important, because we are a liaison between the city and the power companies. In other words, if we're, if we're able to, and with approval of the council, they can come talk to us. We're trained in the way those trees should be trimmed, and we can be a watchdog for your city streets to make sure that those crews are doing it right. And if you, if you, if they're out there working and you don't think that they're doing it right, doing it correctly, call one of us. And, and we can go out and talk to them and make sure they're doing it correctly. And as far as, uh, overhead wires, we are right now in the process of developing a plan, a master plan for the city, street by street, to address the proper kind of trees that be planted in a tree lawn. And for overhead wires, there are certain species that we have a list and it has the, the, the recommendations for the O D N, the O D N R. We'll know exactly what kind of trees to put on the wires. And if we have wide open spaces, you don't want a little tiny tree in a space that could have a huge, huge tree. So that's, that's our goal. We want to get the right kind of trees in the right places on the streets.
Okay, I think that's what a lot of people end up asking, they say, well, what can I plant?
Exactly.
Yeah.
And that's why we're trying to develop right now that master plan for every street in these ciders. Any other questions?
Andrew.
I just have a, the scenario that Sis just brought up with, uh, having two current, soon to be banned trees in her tree lawn.
Oh, yeah.
Um, but I, I, just a scenario, let's say a lightning strike occurs and one of her Bradford pears is taken out. Is she going to be allowed to plant a new Bradford pear to match the existing Bradford pear that may be surviving in health?
Yeah. Because it's for the greater good. The Bradford pears, after four and a half years, you won't be able to buy any kind of pear tree.
Okay, that's by the state.
That's by the state.
Yeah.
So.
Regardless of what, what you guys do here at Council, um, the state has put a moratorium on those? And, yeah, five years.
They're a banned tree.
It's, it's this December. December, the State of Ohio Nursery Association will not allow, be allowed to sell any type of decorative pear tree.
Right.
That's this year. But right now, there's a big sales on it. The Ohio nurserymen are trying to unload their product as fast as they can right now.
And that's why the state gave them basically five, well, now four and a half years completely, because they have an inventory and it would be fair to them to have to eat that inventory, so. Right, they do have a little bit of time to, to clarify the inventory.
To clarify it though, you, you're not necessarily going to go around and cut the trees down that are banned on the list.
Oh, absolutely not.
It's just the idea that you won't be allowed to plant new ones and a replacement.
Exactly, oh, no.
And this is specific to, uh, public lands, public right of way. You still.
Like you can still put them in your backyard.
Yeah, not right.
Exactly, yes.
So this is just, we're just talking about the tree lawn and.
Tree.
Our parks. Like it says here, so many people, service of any public place.
Right.
That's right.
So yes, so don't let it get excited.
Oh, no, we're not, we're not hitting the streets, John. No, no, no.
Okay, then we are going to basically need a list and, and get some, maybe some draft resolution for us to take a look at then?
Yeah.
I don't know that we're changing the ordinance so much as just changing the names and what's on it.
Right, we're just shuffling names.
Just shuffling the names around.
Yeah, give you the list. Drawn up for you. Drawn up for you.
Yeah.
Purdue University, they're a renowned tree university. I got on their website, and I printed off enough for the committee just to kind of bring them up on the speed of what, what kind of trees are on a list, the way that Purdue University looks at invasive species for trees and stuff like that. And so, I printed four copies. And for the general public out there too, if you go to a website, it's called www.i-treetools.org. You can get on that website too, and it tells a lot of things about invasive trees and how you determine whether a tree is a good tree for your city or whatever. So, I mean, that's a very informative thing that you can look at too.
And Bruce, you made a really good point. You go to a website, go to the US Forestry Department website, and go to urban forestry, and it's just a huge, huge area of study right now, and how much benefit that, you know, urban forest brings. And there's all sorts of information about all the benefits that trees contribute to the city.
Did you, oh, I thought maybe, I thought maybe you had something...
Oh, no, 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 no. Obviously, she's got this low end of the table.
You explained that very well. So, yeah, I guess, should we, I think we should get, I guess we...
Do you want to get this into the legislation or?
Yeah.
Oh, it's gonna work, it's gonna work out.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't think it's gonna work with the, we're gonna get that together.
There's no rush. Bring it back to committee.
We'll, we'll have the list.
Guess on this what you want, what you don't want?
Yeah.
That sounds good. So, we're basically cabling this till further notice?
The, yes, the law director just reminded me, there is a prayer service that's going to begin in about seven minutes downstairs. Are there people coming in or they're moving it out since it's a beautiful evening out there and it's not raining? Oh, okay. Well, just keep an eye on that for us, if you would. Thank you. There were, it was a lot of baby birds. Yes.
I think we had that before.
Yeah, we did last year.
All right, well, moving on, let's go to the park improvement bond. Back in, back during the, just kind of bring someone up to date. Back during the budgetary process, we kind of ran short on money to get everything done. So, one of the options was to do a park, what do we call it? I guess we're calling it a park improvement bond. So, one of the big things is the swimming pool has a crack in it, and we need to get that fixed. So, I guess here from the findings on December seventh, the Service Safety Director will research capital improvements for Almiler Park to be paired with poor pairs for a bond anticipation note with findings presented to council after the first of the year. Well, it is after the first of the year now, so what you got for us, Jeff?
Well, you all have the list here, the, just so you all know, the P five block building is the old concession stand we use it as a garage for the mower that we got last year. It needs a new roof, and that price is a metal roof that matches all of our shelters that we've had redone in the last five, six years. So, you're probably looking at a thirty to forty-year lifespan. And Joyce, you can jump in here if I say anything wrong, but in this bond, they all have to be capital improvements. So, as you look down, we started some electric issues last year where we, you know, we've replaced the service by the pavilion. There's other wires and poles that need to be replaced, different wiring ran from poles for lights and the shelters. That was the phase two for AEP. And then, the tennis and the pickleball courts, we, the people that did the basketball courts out there, which turned out really nice, they had given us a price around to thirty-two, thirty-three thousand, and they're gonna honor that price from last year. And then, you get down to the pool repair, which it's just not a crack in the pool. They're actually gonna replace the bottom of the pool, that's all cement. And we do have some hollow spots underneath. So, rough ballpark was at a hundred and forty thousand until we get into it, but they thought that would, they would replace the whole bottom up to the stainless steel and reseal it. Unfortunately, I don't, I don't recall what the warranty was on that work. I called Jeff Dunn and he didn't have it, so. The pump room repairs, we have put a Band-Aid on those for the last fifteen, eighteen years. Right now, we're running our pool on a pump from a pool that would be at somebody's house, you know, for thirteen, fifteen thousand gallons, and we got two hundred and fifty thousand gallons. So, we had not done a good job of using with chemicals and, you know, just, just, we put a Band-Aid on it, basically, and we need to get that upgraded as long, you know, as long as with the filter. And then, the Friendship Bridge, which I think we found out late last year, spring, summer, that there was a resolution passed that we took ownership of that. And we have not had it inspected. They've reached the bolts they can reach, but a company's gonna have to commit and go out over the water and go up underneath and check everything. And we have reached out and got a couple of engineering firms to give us a quote on what that would actually charge us to come and do that, so we knew what needed fixed. So, unfortunately, you're looking at the two-twenty mark of an adding ten percent, but you're looking at a quarter of a million dollars. So, and Joyce, we bet and talked about doing a bond and payment being around twenty grand a year or twenty-five. And Joyce, you can probably touch base on that a little bit, aren't you?
Well, we're talking about a bond anticipation note, which is different than a bond. I mean, this is too small to actually issue bonds for it. But with a bond anticipation note, it would be renewable on an annual basis. We could pay on it each year, and of course, pay the interest each year. It'd be renewable annually, so we could pay it off as fast as our budget would allow, or, you know, we have options. Yeah, we've done this with a lot of other things.
How long would this last? General.
That's kind of us. In the past, ten years. In the past, maybe about ten years.
Ten years. Okay. Did we do the elevator?
We did the elevator that way.
In the room, one guy?
At, yeah. When, when I came into office in two thousand, we had bond anticipation notes that covered the first sewer back that we got that was purchased back in the nineties. We also had one for the street garage out on Isaac Beal. You know, it took us, and there have been payments made on it annually. And it took us probably another five years after I came in or so to get those paid off. But the interest rates are starting to creep up a little bit, but they're not as high as they were back then when we were doing that. So, and I don't think the Federal Reserve is, you know, they're raising it a quarter percent at a time. It's not gonna be huge interest rates that we're looking at, so.
And I, I think we talked about doing this like, right, right before the Bradford Festival or right after?
No, it'd be right after we actually closed the pool, a week early.
We, that's...
We'll have to get it out to bid and get bids.
We're starting the other projects, of course, much earlier.
Yeah, much sooner, but the pool, the main one, we would do after the pool season. We're gonna try to seal it up good for this summer and hope that we can get by it, and then we'll get it drained, and the company will be able to commit because they have to have a certain temperature to work in and get it painted after they get it in there. They thought if we closed right after the Bradford, they'd get it empty and let it dry out, that they could get it done in the fall.
So, I guess, any discussion on that?
I think we need to proceed and take care of what properties we have.
All right, I agree.
I'm making a motion to go with this proposal for the second bid.
Two hundred and forty-two thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars.
Two fifty.
Well, it'll be, well, round it up to two fifty.
I'm gonna give you said law.
You're gonna give it up?
Which is funny, because I own golf.
This golf, right? This golf.
I'm making a motion for that.
Okay. And, Bruce, on that, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay.
Okay, I will call our block council, and he will prepare legislation for us, and I'll let you know the timeline as soon as I know it. And then, I can give you, once, once we get into it and we talk to our broker who would be actually selling the notes for this, then we'll have an idea of an interest rate.
Thank you, Bruce.
Okay, now we're on to the bike path grant. So, and I'm gonna, I think as, I mean, I don't know about the rest of the committee, but as, not talking about the money part of it, because this is just public lands and buildings. So, I don't think it's a bad idea to have a bike path, but the rest of it's financed, we'll have to figure out. So, there's a lot of, I have to...
Well, before you, you have the resolution that we passed in twenty seventeen, and then it was taken out of the twenty eighteen budget. And then, finally, on the third page, you have some words from the mayor talking about the bike paths. But I believe this was twenty-two thousand dollars, Mr.?
Yes.
Twenty-two thousand dollars was the city share, correct?
Right, yes.
And this is, would you explain where this is?
Yeah, please, that's what I need to know.
Yeah.
As in, what do you mean, where?
Where, where is it gonna run?
Oh, I'm sorry, okay. I didn't know what you meant. It would actually run beside Friendship Drive. There would be a grass space in between and run, I do believe, all the way to the Friendship Bridge, correct, John?
Correct.
Yeah. So, how wide, how wide was it, do you remember?
I believe it's eight, eight to ten feet.
Yeah.
I think one of the questions is, where is the planned expansion from there going to go?
Well, that I refer to John, because him and Jeff have been working on that.
Where's the planned expansion from there, next steps, going forward? Well, right now, in terms of the bike path, it ends at Southern Avenue, makes that north turn to the Friendship Bridge. And so, that connects Almiler Park with the current bike path that we have along Southern Avenue. In terms, in terms of expanding it from there, there are no current plans to expand it from there. We have a bike route that the county Quality of Life Action Team's working on that would expand the current bike route from Low Volk Park area in eastern Crawford County. It'll expand it west through Ucyrus and to the wind-up county line. But that's a bike route which is on Piggish Streets.
Well, I'm gonna say, and nobody else can say, the good path. You know, there's a, there's a road there, and it's not very well traveled. I understand we have, we have money, and, you know, we've gotten this grant now, and we went through this during the budget that, that, okay, if we don't take the grant, are they gonna frown upon us on the next one? So, all those things in consideration. But that's all financial. My only hangup at the time was, was the financial part of it. And like I say, we ended up kicking a bond for the pool. So, we kicked the bike path out, so at that point, that was last year, so. I just, I didn't feel good about spending money to put a path beside a road that we wasn't traveling much. But I understand that, I understand the bike path idea, you know, so. Yeah, I don't know what the answer is, so I guess I'll leave that to the committee. Any, any, Sis?
Since I spent so much time in Columbus and in the neighborhood areas of Columbus, I mean, there, actually, this one amazed me, but Sawmill Road, it starts down at two seventy and heads north and used to sort of stop right there at Home Road. Well, it extends now all the way up to Delaware.
To Route Forty-two.
To Route Forty-two. There's a bike path beside it all the way. I mean, that's how important the developers see this to a community. And they're looking, of course, to be expanding. Right now, you know, there's, there's big growth of things taking place in Columbus, you know, and everywhere you go, all the, when I go out to the soccer fields, spend my life in soccer fields. When you go buy soccer fields, you're going to see bike paths everywhere. You see this, this is, this is what the young people expect to get them. And I think we need to do some things to entice the younger people to come back to our communities, where you can take out your two or three kids on bikes, and you can take off, and you can make your way on out to Almiler Park, and you've got a nice park out there. You can take advantage of the things that are there and, and spend a day that doesn't cost a lot for a family to do. And I think that it gives, it gives our community a forward look, a look to say, hey, you know, we're not sitting here, we realize that we are a small town, and we enjoy our small townness, but I think we still need to take some steps as to what younger people expect to get from their community.
Bruce, what was the waiting list on this bike path? I mean, how hard was it for us to get? And if we are to do this bike path, how, how many hoops do we have to jump through to get another one? I mean, once we get one, can we expand on other areas of the city? I, you know, I've been a, you know, a person that's been pushing a walking path out to Walmart that's gotten narrower and narrower and narrower instead of getting bigger.
I can, yeah, come for it. I speak today. What we've been told by our engineers is that if we don't accept this, it would be harder, much harder for us to get another grant from them. But yeah, most definitely, if we do get it, we could expand. Right now, this one is kind of the low-hanging fruit for us, because there's no land acquisition that comes into play here. We already own the land. In some of the other areas, land acquisition or easements are gonna come into play. I, I'm not, not the one out the Walmart, because that's in the right way. But in other bike paths that we, we've looked at, you know, that, that would come into play. And certainly, some of those funds can be used for purchasing easements or rideways for that.
Can I follow up? Is there a list of proposed areas besides this?
Um, not really, we're just kind of high-level concept type of stuff. I mean, I put together Google now, that shows potential areas, you know, along the river. It would be nice to have like maybe a riverwalk or a river path that would follow. Yeah, that would connect Harman Park. I even, you know, we're thinking of a bridge across Highland that would connect from Harman Park through Long River to Highland, have a bridge that crosses the river at Highland, and then people could continue on out to the Walmart area. But that's all, that's all conceptual, nothing, nothing concrete.
No, I don't have a problem with it. I'm okay with it, though.
I did just, a friend of mine, their daughter works for a city up north of here, and I gave the information to the service director about the AARP grants that are available. And evidently, we have till May the sixteenth to take a look at these grants to get an application in for it. So, I was suggesting that, you know, it never hurts to ask and put something in, in front of them, and if we already have something engineered and, you know, could we even use another grant to take up the place of the, of the money that we're required to put in, into it? I think it would be well worth looking at, and we're getting into the financials here, but it might be something well worth looking into to see if they would allow us to do something like that.
Anything else?
The, yeah, the, our share was twenty-two thousand, what was the OGNR share in the grant?
It was an eighty-twenty, wasn't it?
Eighty-twenty, so we're twenty. That seems like a pretty good investment to get OGNR paying for eighty percent of that project. And that might not come around again. And that's a big gap in the bike path if you don't, if you don't do it. I mean, I think that's a pretty, I don't, I don't want to overthink this one, but it's just my two cents there.
Yeah?
I, I think that the bike path would be a good thing for safety for kids from that neighborhood there getting into the park without being on that service road going back there, because a lot of times they're dumping fill, big trucks are going down there. And to get, you know, you might have some young kids going along that road and if they're on a safe bike path, they don't have to worry about traffic.
Yeah, I think that's the major idea.
It's one of the components, too.
Any other?
I did, I did have a comment section on the city's website that people could leave a comment about the value that this would bring. And we had about seven comments, ten comments in total. Seven were in favor, three were, were not in favor of it or they didn't like the city spending money on it that way. But, but the majority of them were in favor of it and thought it was an excellent idea.
Just one other point, in, in general, on the overall bike path, I think a little, a little better publication or, you know, word of mouth of what the overall bike path is going to end up looking like would really be helpful for ours in, in terms of our being able to promote what this future bike path is gonna look like and giving people an understanding of what the future finished project would entail. So, just a thought there.
My biggest thing is, okay, I agree, we should, future drawing where possible, the possibilities are. But you also gotta know, after we get the grant, okay, then we are stuck with the whole bill on maintaining it. How are we gonna fund that? I'm just saying, in the future, I know it's not, it would last, but we don't know.
We're gonna talk about it in the finance committee.
I'm just saying, that's my concern about it.
And I'm saying mine for that, so.
I, I, that, that's my biggest concern. You know, this one isn't gonna, this one wouldn't be that much expense to maintain. But if we have these others where they're going through the easements and if, you know, if you're going along the river and of course that river floods and we have to make it wide enough to get service vehicles down there to clean out whatever, and it's gonna cost. And I'm just saying, we have to, we, if we go with this on future, and this one I'm fine with. But future, I'm saying, we need to really have a cost estimate on what it's gonna be to maintain that in the next. If we get it done twenty, twenty twenty, how much is it gonna cost to maintain for the next ten years, twenty years? We gotta have that figured out on how we're gonna fund that, how we're gonna take care of it. That's my biggest concern, but I'm okay with this one here because it's, that's just my comment.
So, any other?
They're gonna send it to finance, huh?
I'm gonna send it to finance. So, do we?
He's getting it from finance.
You can read it.
So, do we need to do anything? Give us our blessing, hey, I, I wish we could have bike paths everywhere, but it's Monica's job to figure out how we pay for it.
You might wanna do just a motion and a second to favorably send it to finance.
I'll make a motion for you.
Okay. Doug made a motion and Mr. McEvers seconded that to send it to finance. All in favor?
Aye.
No opposed. With that, I guess we're wrapping up our Public Lands and Buildings, seven fifteen.
Okay, I'll call finance to order at seven fifteen P.M. First is the various appropriations.
Actually, to kind of get this in order, I'd like to skip to the third bullet point, the creation of a line item, because if we don't have that, we can't be appropriating. Okay, so we need to create a line item for Fund Two Eight Six, the twenty eighteen Victims of Crime Act Victim Advocate Materials and Supplies. And this is being created so that we can appropriate money to it for our victim advocate to go to training. So, I don't know, do you want a separate motion to approve this before we run the appropriation?
Yes. So, on this highlighted for creation of line item, it shows you what's going to be, what she needs for it. She doesn't have that Materials and Supplies, number twenty-four, line item already created in the budget. And she just needs to create a budget, a line item, zero bounds to begin with, and then we'll address the money later on.
I'll make a motion to accept the auditor's request to create a line item per the details of her memo for May fifteen, what's that?
Second.
First by Shaw, second by Myers. All in favor?
Aye.
Both?
Okay, so for appropriations. So, back to the one that's got appropriations, various appropriations, right?
Okay, we need to appropriate in the general fund, Program Seven, General Government under the Law Director category, three hundred and seventy-two dollars and forty-eight cents in materials and supplies. This is the twenty percent share of the twenty eighteen Victims of Crime Act grant that we're getting for training and education for our victim advocate. And then to go along with that, the Fund Two Eight Six, twenty eighteen Victims of Crime Act, our victim advocate has received an eighty-twenty grant from the state attorney general's office for training that he will be receiving in August in the amount of fourteen hundred eighty-nine dollars and ninety-two cents, that's the eighty percent share. So, I need those two appropriations.
I'll make a motion to approve the two appro, the appropriations just mentioned by the auditor for May fifteen, what do you think? Second there.
First by Shaw, second by Myers. Do you approve appropriations? All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Motion passed.
Okay, then we have a couple of transfers.
No, I think we need two separate ordinances, one for appropriations and one's for transfers. So, you'll have two signatures you're gonna be required to do. So, the transfers are there at the bottom of the paper provided by the auditor under various appropriations. The appropriations are at the top, the transfers are at the bottom.
Is the second one you were handed the correct one?
You're gonna, you're gonna hold on to that one for a moment.
Okay.
That has the twenty-two thousand at the top. That's if we go to the bike path, we gotta come back.
That's, yeah, that's an all-remedy, adds that if it gets passed.
So.
I just tried to be prepared in case I couldn't be doing that.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, so the first transfer is within the general fund, Program Set, General Government, under the Law Director category, and we're transferring nine thousand dollars from personal services to contractual services. And this is for a contract with the county prosecutor to cover any city prosecutions for three months. And Rob may, I don't know if he wants to elaborate on that or?
No, we're just, we're contracting with the county to handle most of our initial prosecution. We'll still be doing tax and property maintenance by additions.
And then the other transfer is in Fund Two Eight Five, twenty eighteen Ohio Crime Victims Assistance Grant. And we're transferring twenty-five hundred dollars from personal services, materials and supplies. And this is for the new victim advocate for some other training that he'll be getting locally and for some new office equipment.
Do I have a motion for?
I think, wait a second, Dan had a question for you.
Yeah, I just, I guess back to the nine thousand dollar that we saw, we're wondering why we were subcontracting that or whatever you wanna call it. Farming it out, basically. Is that something you typically do?
Well, up until about two thousand ten or eleven, it was always done that way. In the last, well, starting early last week or so, I'm doing some work over at Crestline. So, we're gonna go back to contracting with the county to handle those prosecutions for, for a short term.
So, the monies he would have been paid to do this are going to the county rather than him receiving the funds?
So, it's no new money, it's just moving around?
Oh, no, no, it's actually, it's actually coming down my paycheck.
Yeah, he's getting paid for two hours a week, right?
Yeah, well.
Two hours a week for these three months, basically.
Well, I think.
Well, I'm getting paid a lot less than that.
Yeah.
We're doing a lot more than that, but yeah.
Answers my question, okay.
Yeah, it's not new money, it's.
He just wanted to share his salary with the county.
Yeah. It's, it's just a different line.
Keep it local, that's all.
Well, they're out there at the courthouse and they deal with me this before all the time, as it is anyway, and it's basically a time-saving.
Oh, I, I think he answered the question, though. Is, is that the question you kind of had?
I was just pointing out that he had a question.
Oh.
You asked for a motion.
Yeah, oh, you got a question?
No, I, well, yeah, I do. May I ask it?
Sure.
What happened to the company that was handling, that was going to handle our tax collections for us?
They are handling.
They are?
Yeah.
Okay, 'cause when you said something about the county's gonna do it.
No, the tax prosecutions, we're, we're still doing here in-house and as well as the property maintenance things, mostly because nobody else wants to do any of those things. But they're handling our collections efforts and I, I haven't seen revenue numbers on that, so I'm not sure.
Yeah, and I need to go, I need to go through a lot, it, it's kind of hard to, well, I need to get numbers together so I can tell you actually how much they've, they've collected for us. And it's, it's really stepped up during tax season. A lot of people would rather come and pay us directly than to send them money. So, a lot of times we're getting a statement that says received by, by you and received by them, you know? And then we pay them their fees based on that, but they do, they do an automatic deposit to the bank for us on what they collected and then we, they send us a bill and we pay them their share. But it's, it's been working pretty well. It's less paperwork for us because they're sending all the letters and follow-ups and making phone calls that we don't have to do. And it, it's been rather effective. We were pleased, and I will tell you one number that, that really surprised me when I was working on statistics for, for the CAFR last week. I, one of the lines in one of the reports was what we collected in penalties and interest each year. And I think we had our highest amount in seventeen at a hundred and three thousand dollars we had collected, that was just in penalties and interest.
Wow.
And that's a, and a big difference between using those and sending a lot of those cases to court is a lot of that interest and penalty money goes into court fees and court costs and stuff, so I haven't seen their numbers yet, but I anticipate that probably. The, in seventeen, maybe a little bit, in eighteen, I, I expect them to take a big hit. And, and if, sometime if you want, I'll come in, kind of walk you through that tax prosecution process. It is a very time-consuming process, not only for, for me in my office, but her office and her tax people, tremendous amount of time, and even for the police. You know, just the amount of time involved in serving with warrants and involves, the, the backside of that that you don't see is a tremendous time commitment.
You still need a motion on the answer.
So moved.
Feel, feel for it.
So moved.
Feel for it. I'll second.
Kevin, Myers first, Ryan the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Both? Motion passed. Park improvements. So, this was sent from Public Lands and Buildings.
It's Monica, it's Monica.
Thank you, Dan.
I think Mr. Meyer, I can give you the report of what came out of this committee.
Oh, yeah, we, yeah. Our committee was begging to ask for a two hundred fifty thousand dollar, well, bond anticipation note. So, we'd like finance to approve that.
Discussion.
Joyce, what do you anticipate the interest rate would be if you had to?
Just guess.
Just guess me. Three, three and a half percent. That's a guess.
Right.
What would be the term of the bond?
That's what I said.
It's twelve months at a time.
In renewable?
Yes, renewable each year, every twelve months.
So, here's the thing, we've got to be, we've got to fix this for now, so.
And, and in the budget process, we will determine how much we're gonna pay on it, you know, the following year, plus the interest. So, that, that'll come up every, every year in the budget process that this is what we want to pay against this.
There'll be a special, there'll be a line item?
Yes, there'll be a line for debt service, yes.
Yes, for debt service for this.
And this is a general, general obligation note, which means that it's the general fund that has to pay that.
Monica. Another question, I'm gonna jump ahead because it pertains to this, moving on, asking a question about this bike path grant. Can the money that is our share for the bike path grant be included in the bond since that's a capital improvement?
It could if we don't use all of that two hundred fifty thousand, you know, when the bids come in, yes, it could. Because that is a capital improvement and that's all it can be used for and it's part of the parks, so.
Because as, as was noted in the Public Lands and Building Committee, you know, we're favorable to having this, it's just trying to figure out how are we going to find the finances? And this is one way that would allow us to be able to afford to do it and start those quality of life things that we're looking for. So, I just wanted to ask if that was even a possibility to find a way to essentially find it.
I don't know if we have that much of a cushion in this bond, because we're, you know, kind of close, but.
Well, we did put in the ten percent, which is twenty-two thousand dollars.
There's still another, still another eight thousand more, so you got thirty thousand cushion.
So, yeah, if bids come in, in our favor, it, it would be there and it could be used for that.
And I'm gonna go again.
Since Kevin jumped ahead to the bike path.
So, the bike path was taken out of the budget. What's your feelings on the, the bike path money coming out of the current year's budget and not being added to bond? In terms of, how, how well does that fit into the current budget?
I think it'll fit fine. We're, we're currently nine percent above anticipated revenue. I don't think twenty-two thousand is going to hurt us.
And then back to the bond anticipation. And then back to the bond anticipation note, I know it's asking you to kind of predict the future, but what do you foresee as, as a payoff plan for that? In terms of how many years can we, how quickly can we get that fixed?
That's what I asked.
That's, yeah, that's kind of hard to say because we don't know what revenues are gonna do, you know? And that's why I say we're gonna look at it each year. I would say we probably pay, you know, past practice has been to pay at least ten thousand dollars per year off of this. Now, on two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, that's not a very big dent. But it could always be twenty thousand, you know?
Well, that's, that's, I guess what I'm looking at is if we're, you know, it's, it's not a particularly high interest rate, but it's on two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars and that's gonna, you know, add ten thousand dollars to this project every year. Now, that, that's not exact numbers, but it's gonna add a big chunk of money. And if we're not paying it down to a high enough extent, we're gonna be paying for these pool and park improvements.
For a few years.
In perpetuity, yeah. And that's what I don't want to see.
Right.
Is that we take on a bond anticipation note and we never pay the thing off. And then we pay half a million dollars or, you know, seven-hundred, seven-hundred thousand dollars for two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars.
Historically, we've paid things off much more quickly.
And that's what I was going to bring up. We've done, we've done this before, as she mentioned, which projects that we had done this on. And when we sit down to the budget, this is one of the first items that we decide on. I mean, it, it says, and we're gonna work around this in order to get this paid off. So historically, we've been very, very good with doing that. I mean, that's in the, kind of, the last sixteen years that I've been on council, so...
I really think the biggest thing to consider to make sure we're going to be able to pay it off before any of these repairs or updates, we're out. You know, the last thing I want to see is, you know, putting a hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars into the pool. And before we get this paid off, hey, we need to fix the pool again. We owe it to, to the people that we're representing to make sure we're spending their money wisely. And so I just wanna kind of tack onto what Andy said, just make sure it, it's our anticipation and that we'd be able to pay it off in the timeframe that these repairs are gonna, their lifespan.
That would be the plan, yes. I know, I've, I've seen, like I say, there was a lot of debt when I, when I came in office and we were paying on Waterworks revenue bonds that, for improvements at the water plant, that those things that already had been replaced and we've never paid off yet.
But we were, and we were paying like seventeen, fourteen or seventeen percent interest on it too.
Oh, the reservoir, we were, yes.
So, though, I mean, those, and we couldn't refinance. You were not allowed to refinance.
But they finally, for the last five years, dropped the interest rate for us.
Of course, when those are gone.
Yeah. He's still pondering.
No, my only thing I was gonna say is that I would, I would, I would keep the, I would keep the bike path portion out of this and just get that part paid off now versus adding it to it and making it a bigger number. That's just my thought on that. But I'm, I'm okay with...
Well, now, there's a question then. If we do a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand, we don't want two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand.
If we don't use it, then we make sure that that goes back the following year.
Okay.
Then, yeah.
Thank you for that point. And that happens during the budget process, essentially?
Yeah.
Thank you, that was my question.
There aren't any limitations on how much you can pay down or anything like that? There's no prepayment penalties, there're no, you know, nothing. It must be determined each year.
So do I have a motion to approve the bond anticipation note for capital improvements of the park for two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
First by Wireball, second by Myers. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Both? Motion back. Okay. Moving on, the bike path grant. Dan?
Yes, this is what we turn over to finance to. And I'm okay with the bike, or with the bike paths. I just, I, when, when we first took this out of the budget, it was because, last year, it was because, I, I think basically we ended up buying a police cruiser with that and some other money.
Anticipating the pool.
And, well, yeah, we wanted, we wanted, they, let me put it this way. The suggestion was waiting up here for the pool. We didn't do that, that's why we took the law. But it was kind of a, anyhow, I don't know, I'm still, I, I'm not sure where we are with safety forces. You know, are we up to snuff, you know? And I don't wanna take, that's my personal take. And I don't want to take money not away from them. If we need that towards safety forces, I'd rather see it go there. So that's, I guess that's it in the nutshell.
Did they budget a hundred-and-forty last year for the pool?
No.
No, did they budget anything for the pool? Okay, with the anticipation of the bond? Okay. I remember being there, I still remember how it went. We, we put our basic maintenance dollars in, then we budget every year for it. Nothing out of the norm.
Yeah, you did have a letter, I believe everybody has a letter here from Crawford Twenty Twenty Vision Quality Life Team. Sent a letter. Everybody has that?
It was laid next to your packet. It wasn't on your packet.
It wasn't on the packet. It was certainly laid over to one side.
Do you want me to read it?
Tell her, tell her, yeah, read something.
Dear counsel, on behalf of Crawford Twenty Twenty Vision Quality of Life Action Team, this letter is to convey our strong support of the ODNR Bike Path Grant and the supporting city expense for this friendship lane cap. We have a volunteer committee that is actively working on a countywide bike path or bikeway plan that will create linkages between our cities and rural landscapes for the betterment of alternative transportation, physical activity, and safe routes. This grant can be the catalyst towards the first steps in making our community and surrounding area a well-designed, active community. We advocate for these reasons. To improve access to homes, employment, parks, stores, and schools to increase physical and mental health benefits. To decrease air pollution by improving alternative transportation such as biking and walkable paths. To decrease traffic-related injuries by having designated routes. To increase the chances of living longer by improving the quality of life for the citizens of Resire in Crawford County. Thank you for your consideration. We understand the need for a thorough, data-driven decision and we feel this investment in conjunction with ODNR will pioneer long-term goals. Sincerely, Bethany Foye, Crawford Twenty Twenty Vision Quality of Life Action Team.
I hate to ask, it's not my committee, but, and I hate to say, you just said, you know, not to do that, but if we're worried about the twenty-two thousand for safety forces, if we need to use it for that and we have the ability to have the leftover out of this bond anticipation, why can't we do both? I guess would be my question. Why can't we save the twenty-two thousand for the possibility to use for safety forces and just use it out of the bond? And am I correct in understanding that decisions wouldn't have to be made right now?
As far as...
Whether, whether it was included in the bond or not?
That would be correct. That wouldn't have to be decided.
I mean, because you gave your opinion...
Because we're not gonna know until we actually get numbers.
Right.
It needs to be appropriated and actually put in the budget.
Correct.
When the grant comes in, it'll just offset...
So you gave your opinion this evening that you felt we were in decent shape to, to take that on. Should things change, essentially that the bond would be a backup to that.
Could conceivably cover.
If necessary.
A motion then to allocate, to appropriate the money, is what you need to do.
Do I have a motion to allocate the money for the bike path grant?
I'll make that motion.
First by Shaw, second?
I'll second then.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
I will recess at seven forty-one PM.
All right, Health and Safety called to order at seven forty-one PM. And you'll see in that portion of the packet, the letter that's dated March twenty-first. Essentially, what we did was when we addressed this previously, it was not done so correctly because the traffic study that was done by ODOT was not all, it was not all included in this, correct? So essentially, all we have to do is go back through, we're just discussing the three traffic lights that were removed in the ninety-day trial that we were asked to push forward by the Traffic Commission. So what we're looking for is a motion to approve the change to the traffic control map, taking the lights out and installing four-way stops at East Mansfield of Spring, East Mansfield of Poplar, and East Marriott Poplar.
What were the findings? I mean, what I'm getting at is what were the findings from ODOT? Do they have any opinions that we know?
Not, not, this is in the city. This isn't any state routes anymore than Intellar County Road Thirty. So they, they had no opinion on that.
This, this wasn't really included in ODOT's study.
Yeah.
So the language was incorrect, the way that we passed this, so we might have to readdress it.
My only question is, is why was it made a four-way stop? I mean, why, why is it not a two-way? I mean, your traffic flow is east and west, but if you were worried about making traffic flow better, why are...
Well, I think it, a lot of it was due to the kids that walked to school. That's, you know, they made the little things, so with a four-way stop, it's helpful traffic control.
There is a lot of foot traffic and vehicular traffic in the morning that there, yeah.
I'm fully aware of that. I was there for thirty something years.
Yeah.
There you go, I think, but I'm pretty sure I asked that same question, I think. And if I'm not mistaken, the mayor said that they had talked with Mr. Kimmel, and I believe it was Mr. Burke, and that was why they decided to do four-way stops for the kids going to school and grade and stuff like that, just to create for many accidents at that intersection.
I think one of the things that we see is that a lot of times people, and myself included, are reluctant to embrace change. When it was first brought up at the Traffic Commission, I thought, well, four-way. And now as I've driven it all the time, I find myself kind of like... Accepting of it a little more, I guess.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question?
You should ask.
Please. Being a resident close to the intersections involved, I see a great benefit for the flow of traffic at these intersections with the change. But I do see a major problem with pedestrians at these intersections. Too many of the motor vehicle operators do not want to allow pedestrians time to walk across the intersections. So if something could be done, some, maybe some extra patrol there to kind of help get the point across to people that they need to stop for pedestrians, that might be a great benefit.
Do you have anything to...
Well, I guess my first thought was we should not only look at signage, but maybe some crosswalks.
That's what I was just thinking.
Especially to get other, you know, the stuff up.
That might be helpful.
With that, in your opinion, from living there, you know, if we did increase the signage and the crosswalk, did just make it more aware to the drivers, is that sufficient for, for what you've noticed?
I would say that'd almost have to be a trial.
Sure.
There are things we can definitely do visually with the crosswalks, with signage, that would, that would induce motors to allow those. Put a fine on there, how much it is if violated.
So I guess the only other question is, do we wanna go ahead and pass these changes? Or do we wanna, because you almost have to to redo the striping at this point, correct? And then to be able to put additional signage up? So we have to go ahead and pass this, make those changes, and then it can always be revisited through Traffic Commission and then brought back to, to this committee and to the full council?
Is ODOT gonna have any issue with crosswalks or is that gonna prove that any...
It's not a state route.
Yeah, okay.
So do I have a motion to approve the changes to the traffic control map that's dated here, making these three intersections a permanent four-way stop?
Please, your committee?
Myers and Keever, Shaw, Truca.
Myers and Keever, Shaw, Truca.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Mr. Keever. Give him a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Shaw. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I'll carry. And we will close out the Health and Safety Committee at seven forty-seven.
So, you guys, first is our community's party, talking about the unit and specialty. For service?
I guess. I mean, as far as service committee, we're gonna meet on May eighth at five PM. We're gonna have a special service meeting. We're going to meet with, with a full committee. Public's invited. We're gonna have a man from Rural Water here, Mr. Cavill, or Cav, something like that. He's supposed to come.
Not on the eighth.
Not on the eighth.
Not on the eighth.
That's the fourteenth, I can believe.
Fourteenth.
May eighth is just your service.
Okay. Yes, fourteenth, fourteenth over here. Okay, good. Sean Dapple.
So we're not gonna have a meeting?
No.
No.
Do you want to finish this, I was all prepared too.
Okay, is there any public participation out there in the audience? No, no public participation. I make the motion. Motion by Mr. Keever.
Second.
Second by Mr. Foote. All in favor, say aye to adjourn.
Aye.
Opposed? No, okay.